All right, welcome Southwest Ranches. We have a lot of important items tonight. We have a lot of important guests and a lot of folks we appreciate being here. So, thank you all for coming. We appreciate it. If you will, please call the roll.
Mayor Bright Cruz?
Here.
Vice Mayor Albritton?
Present.
Councilmember Hartman?
Here.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Here.
Councilmember Kaczynski?
Here.
We have a quorum, Mayor.
Awesome. If you'll please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If I could maybe get a motion?
Yeah, Mayor, make a motion that we move item number nine to the front right now.
Perfect. Do I have a second on that?
I need a second.
Yeah.
I need a second.
Second.
Sorry, Q.
All right, we've got a motion and a second.
I'm sleeping.
Please call the roll.
Councilmember Hartman?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Councilmember Kaczynski?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Albritton?
Yes.
Mayor Bright Cruz?
Yes. Very good. I'm going to just say a couple of words and I'm going to turn it over to our town administrator. We have a wonderful partnership with the town of Davie. They've been a tremendous partner for years now. And I'm very pleased with the item that's on the agenda for tonight. I know our administrator and assistant administrator have done a tremendous amount of work, working with the folks in the administration over in Davie, and really have put together a great contract. So, Andy, I'm going to turn it over to you so you can give us a little background and kind of introduce the item.
Mayor, can I ask Russell to read it into the record first?
Perfect.
This is a resolution of the Town Council of the town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, approving a new interlocal agreement between the town of Southwest Ranches and the town of Davie for the delivery of public safety services, including emergency medical, fire protection, fire and life safety, and police service, authorizing the mayor, town administrator, and town attorney to execute said agreement and providing an effective date.
Great, so I have a motion.
I make a motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion and a second.
Okay, thank you.
Andy.
All right, Mayor, given the magnitude of this contract, I thought it would be very important to go back and revisit the history of where we were, where we are, and where we hope to go into the future.
Great.
If you'll bear with me, it might take me a few minutes, but I think it's an important story to tell.
Perfect, thank you.
So, I'll say to you that when I arrived here back in June of 2012, fire and EMS services were provided by Pembroke Pines. Although Pembroke Pines had already terminated the agreement effective September 30th of that year, and the town had already entered into an agreement with Davie for those services, Davie assumed operations October 1st, 2012. At that time, law enforcement services were provided by BSO. So, almost immediately upon my arrival, we engaged in contract renewal discussions with BSO. I had some concerns with aspects of the contract regarding coverage, and we had some productive conversations. As we got closer to the November elections, Sheriff Lambert requested we hold off until after the election finalized the contract. That November, Lambert was defeated by Scott Israel. So, we then began negotiations with an almost entirely new team, taking directions from the newly elected sheriff. My concerns on staffing remained, and I tried to address that issue. When we had a deputy out on vacation, in training, light duty, or in court, we were short-staffed. BSO did not send anyone else to backfill those shortages. While we normally had two deputies on shift, we often had only one. This was not safe for the deputy and did not provide the level of service and protection that our neighbors and residents needed. BSO treated us as a separate entity, and it was not the benefit of contracting with a larger agency, as you might have expected. In a case of a life safety situation, extra deputies might have been dispatched from either Cooper City or Weston, but both municipalities were not happy with that situation, as their resources were being diverted here, and we usually did not have the staffing to reciprocate. It was one-sided and unfair to them, and I heard that from both city managers at the time. In our then BSO district, we had a commander, which is a lieutenant, because we were too small for a captain, two sergeants, and a detective. It was my belief then, and still is today, that we needed more officers on the street. So, this led me to opening a conversation with Davie as to how we could better staff our town for law enforcement purposes. So, let me be perfectly clear. This was not due to any dissatisfaction with the BSO personnel who were stationed here. To the contrary, they're every bit the outstanding professionals that we expected and deserved. If only the highest of compliments for those who were assigned here. The concerns I had were caused downtown and not here in our district. So, in conversation with Davie Town Administrator Rick Lemack, we discussed changes to the BSO staffing model that would benefit both towns. For those of you who may not know, Rick's background before becoming Davie Town Administrator was in law enforcement, so he speaks from experience. So, working together, we devised a fundamentally different staffing model, one that would provide more coverage for road patrol. Based in our town hall would be a detective and a service aide. The detective would handle Southwest Ranches cases and be the liaison between town administration and the police department. The service aide would be here to take reports and assist residents without the need to call an officer and off the street. The model we put together did not include sergeants, lieutenants, or other command staff. We believe this was unnecessary here, and those resources would be dispatched here as needed. This has worked out very well. And going further, when officers were out for vacations, training, et cetera, Davie assigns other officers to our town to maintain the contracted service levels. So, negotiating the new contract, both Davie police and fire chiefs were involved in the discussion and reviewed our staffing levels. Based upon the level and variety of calls for service, both chiefs believe we are properly staffed, other than adding the rescue crew in 2028. So, our current police staffing model varies from two to four officers at a time. I am working with the chief to better balance that, so that we typically have three officers at any time. Chief has been very receptive to this concern, and our discussions are always collaborative. I do want to take another moment and address Davie's responsiveness and level of service. On the fire side, while we may have one crew stationed at 11282, we are contracting for a full-service fire department. When we had a recent structure fire in Sunshine Ranches, Davie sent 13 vehicles from six different stations. We also receive fire marshal service, commercial building inspections, plan reviews, fire well inspections, et cetera. Much of this may fly below people's radar. On the police side, while we may have three officers on a shift, command staff is here whenever needed. We also receive additional services beyond, such as the mounted unit, community policing, canines, added traffic enforcement, such as the motors unit. And from my experience, and something that's really critical, is Davie does not treat us as a customer, but as an extension of Davie, subject to the same high level of service. And I'll give you an example. Couple of weeks ago, I had a council member, an anonymous council member, in my office, and he had a question. I called Chief Kinsey and went to voicemail. I didn't leave a message. So, I hung up and I called Captain Raven. He answered my question. So, I had the answer. As I was hanging up with them, Assistant Chief Poland called to let me know that Chief Kinsey was on a Zoom call, and he wanted to know if he could help. So, I verified the same information with him, hung up, and a few minutes later, Chief Kinsey called. He finished his Zoom call and called to make sure we got what we needed. Just outstanding follow-up and customer service. So, just to conclude my comments, I know there are residents in town who may be supportive of BSO and might question why we didn't talk to them. And I'll tell you that we did. The discussions on this contract have been ongoing for a long time. So, on September 20th of last year, I went to BSO with Russell, Emile, and Keith. We met with Sheriff Tony and his command staff for over two hours. We had a great discussion, where we talked about the history and staffing models provided by BSO and Davie. And I'll tell you that we did not ask BSO for a price. We asked them for something far more important. We said, "What do you think is the proper staffing model to protect Southwest Ranches?" And I told the sheriff then, if the staffing model made sense, you know, we could then discuss the cause. As I said, that was September 20th of last year. To date, we have not heard back from BSO. So, based upon that and our experience working with Davie, the outstanding partnership that we have, I heartily recommend the council approve the contract tonight. We're available certainly for questions. We have Rick Lemack and Mayor Paul are here, along with a huge contingent from Davie. So, whatever questions you may have, I know the answers are here in this room. So, I'll turn it back to the council. Thank you for indulging me.
Thank you, Andy. It's important to look at back at the history and see where we came from, and just recognize the stellar service that we have received. I know, talking to residents, Davie, you may not want to hear this, but they feel like our guys, okay, and girls, so they're doing these jobs. I got to tell you, they're just, our residents know them by name. They are part of our community, and we love them and we appreciate them, and it does us good to keep them. So, it's a great partnership. All right. Let me turn it over to the council. Do you have any comments, questions on this contract? No. We've obviously talked a lot about this in the past. This is, so, let me open it up to the public. Is there any public comment? Yeah, Noel.
Noel Hollingsworth, 199th Avenue. Most of the questions were answered before it started. The only question I still have is I noticed that we are purchasing several pieces of equipment through Davie. When that is finally paid off, who owns it, since we're paying 100% of the cost of it? Are we going to be the owners, or is Davie going to be the owners? And when that equipment is sold to someone else, who gets the results of that sale? Do we get it, or does it just pass to Davie? Because if we're paying for it, I think we should get the results. Thank you.
Thank you, Noel. Any other public comments? Seeing none, public comment closed. Administrator Lemack or Mayor Paul, would you want to, you're here, we really appreciate you being here, braving the rain, the weather, and all that. If you want to say a word, that's fine. If you're good, you're good.
Mayor Paul, the town of Davie, just to identify myself for the record.
Yeah.
But it's just wonderful to be here. I love coming to Southwest Ranches. I feel like it's also my home. We have so much in common, and we share so many of the same experiences. And I know the horse people from Southwest Ranches love to come to Davie to ride the trails, and the folks from Davie love to come and share your equestrian parks. So, we have these, so many things in common, and it really gives me great pleasure. And thank you very much for all the wonderful things that you've had to say. We're very proud of our police and fire departments, and we're very happy that we're able to share them with you. Thank you very much and good luck.
Thank you. Thank you. I don't know, Emile, do you want to touch on the one question that came up, or?
I actually have the answer.
All right, go ahead. I mean, I think I know how the answer to, but I thought I'd go to the.
Yeah, Noel, I've asked the same question. We're purchasing them, and when the vehicle has reached the end of its life, it'll come back to the town, and we'll dispose of it, however we normally dispose. And this is something we've actually been doing for a few years with Davie. This isn't something new. We purchase, they use, we then retire it.
Very good. All right, I think we are good, if you can please call the question.
Councilmember Hartman?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Absolutely.
Councilmember Kaczynski?
Certainly, yes.
Vice Mayor Albritton?
Yes.
And Mayor Bright Cruz?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Awesome. Thank you all. Really appreciate it. So, we'll take, we'll take like a two-minute break. I know you all are here, and the rain is actually kind of lulled out there, so it may be a good opportunity. You're welcome to stay, but you're welcome to, you're welcome to leave.
Mr. Geller is on the back.
Yes, yes. We're meeting on Tuesday. Okay. I haven't gone through the details yet. So, but.
Thanks, Chief.
Right. I remember that there was Davie as one, like four cities that were special, that I asked my chief to stay and check with the county to find out what the county's position is. So, I'm meeting tomorrow. Not that, but I will ask. Of course, I want, I don't want to be surprised when I go in. Okay.
Let's get the meeting underway again. All right. Thank you.
Good day, folks.
Thank you. We have another very special guest with us this evening, Senator Geller. Always very much appreciate you taking time out of your busy schedule to come out to the ranches and give us a view into your world and what's going on.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and hi. I'm Steve Geller. I'm your Broward County Commissioner. It's not far. I live in Cooper City, so.
Nice.
I basically fall out of bed, and I'm here. It's, I think you're, I believe 1.2 miles from where I live in Embassy Lake, so it's hop, skip, and a jump. Wanted to go over, as you know, I come here every year. I do town meetings in every city I represent at least once a year, and all of you are invited, as I hope it's on your calendar. I think it's two weeks from today, if I'm correct. Yes, I've invited, I represent now five cities. I used to represent seven before reapportionment. At the time, I had all of Southwest Ranches. I now have half of it. But I've invited all of the elected officials in my district, as well as all of the city attorneys and city managers, to lunch on Thursday, August 24th. And I know all of you have received invitations. I do this because I'm trying to make sure I'm bringing the county administrator, the traffic people, the Surtax people, so that we can try and provide one-stop response to any questions that any of the commissioners or administrator or legal counsel may have. So, I look forward to seeing you at that meeting. I'll hit, because I know you've got a lot of things on your agenda, so I'll be quick. There's two or three items I just want to touch on first. As you've heard me say, every year when I'm here, my, all of the county commissioners have different priorities. Number one for me is and remains high-quality job creation in Broward County. I've done this in a lot of different areas. I'm the one that got the funding and helped set up the Levant Center at Nova, which is a joint venture between the county and Nova Southeastern. It's a business incubator with the resources of a full doctoral-level research university behind that. I hold quarterly meetings. I've created a group, I don't know how to describe it, it's a trades jobs group. I firmly believe that everybody needs additional post-high school education, but not everybody has to go to college. If you, I've been particularly focused on the trade jobs, building trades, you know, welding, electricians, plumbers, iron workers, heavy equipment operators. If you're a union electrician and you're working 50 hours a week, 40 hours regular and ten a time and a half, if you're not earning $100,000 a year, you're pretty close to it. A lot of these people go out and start their own small businesses. This is the traditional type of jobs, upper-middle-class jobs that built this country. These jobs are not exportable to other countries. They're not going to get lost to AI or ChatGPT. And I do think that a lot of jobs, lawyers, engineers, architects, radiologists, we're all going to lose a third of our jobs to AI, but the people that aren't are the construction workers. And so, I've spent a lot of time working with groups as diverse as the Boys and Girls Clubs, JA, the Unions, Associated Builders and Contractors, the contractors, subcontractors, a large group, working on creating jobs there. I've basically revitalized, or I had until the strikes, the film industry in Broward County. The median salary statewide in the film industry is $99,000 a year, meaning here in South Florida, it's higher than that. Again, these are the good, solid, upper-middle-class jobs that we need. And by the way, I've checked, the median age in the plumbers, electricians, iron workers, depending on union, on profession, is between 49 and 54. We're just, we've lost a generation, and if we don't start getting more people doing these jobs, our economy is going to collapse. So, this has been one of my, my highest single priority is job, and not burger flipping, good, solid, middle-class and higher job creation in Broward. The two other things I wanted to discuss with you, actually three, I'll do this one quickly. I believe my office sent to you today a copy. This is the Surtax. Again, there's a number of projects being funded here in Southwest Ranches, mostly on the borders of Southwest Ranches. The Surtax Director Gretchen Cassini is scheduled to be at our lunch two weeks from today. If you have any specific questions, please come. And again, and in between then, if you have any questions, contact my office. I see Jim all the time at either Water Board or South Florida Regional Planning Council. He can tell you, I'm very receptive to elected officials and to your city manager. We are about to vote on our county budget. I know you are also in the middle of budget hearings. I've been involved in government for 35 years, since I was elected to the Florida House of Representatives back in 1988. I was 29 at the time. Considerably older now. The, I have a basic philosophy of government, which, you know, may be wrong, but it's one I pretty firmly believe in. I know that our budget is going to go up and down. There's a lot of things we can change, but we can't repeal the business cycle. We know we're going to have good times, and we know we're going to have bad times. During good times, some people advocate cutting millage, which doesn't make sense unless you're prepared to raise it back. And since nobody's ever prepared to raise it back, you shouldn't be cutting millage. But you also should not be going out and hiring a lot of, which a lot of other people want to do, recurring positions. Because if you hire a lot of recurring positions, when you hit the bad times, you don't have the money to pay them. What we should be doing, and I've tried advocating this for, literally for decades, during good times, we shouldn't be profligate spenders just because we have a little money. We should sock it away in reserves, and that's the time that you do your capital spending, when you have the money. When we hit the lean times, which we will, you tap the reserves, and you don't do the capital spending, because you've done that when you're flush. And that's what I've consistently advocated for, and that's what I'm fighting for now. I think it's about as middle-of-the-road economically responsible as you can be. And I've done that. One issue, the last issue I wanted to touch on, I'm sure you will have many questions. But one issue that I have touched on, and Jim has heard me mention this a number of times, is water. I am very concerned, and you all need to be aware of the fact that we have a upcoming problem, and I think it could particularly affect Southwest Ranches. As you know, South Florida was carved out of the Everglades. If you look at a climate map, not weather, which varies from day to day, but climate, which is long-term, all of Broward County is either in tropical rainforest or tropical monsoon climate. That's the official climate category. What either of those means, rainforest or monsoon, is that it rains a lot. And that was fine, because as you see right up there, there's a big giant canal, and that's how we drain South Florida. The Army Corps of Engineers built these big canals, which drain out into the ocean. And that worked fine, as long as inland water levels are here and ocean levels are here, because it's all gravity-fed. You have the seven big canals here in Broward, and then you have dozens, scores, or hundreds of these smaller canals that feed into the big canals. And whenever it rains, and it rains a lot, goes into the canals, goes out to the ocean, which is fine when it's like this. But over the years, this part, the ocean, has been rising. And right now, we've got, the difference between inland and ocean water is not very high, which means the carrying capacity of the canals is not what it used to be. When inland's here and ocean here, you can drain a lot of water. When inland is here and ocean is here, you can drain some. According to every projection we have, in about 13 years, every single day at high tide, they'll be the same. What that means is when it rains, no draining. You remember what happened in Fort Lauderdale a number of months ago? That's what we're heading towards. I have been running, screaming, and shouting for the last four or five years, trying to attract attention to this. It's been working slowly. We've gotten a couple of dollars from Congress, I mean, a couple of dollars. I think it's half a million for a stu, for the first part of a $20 million study. The South Florida Water Management District has started paying attention, the legislature has started paying attention. But the problem is that four years ago, the Army Corps told me, four or five years ago told me, that if they had all of the money that they need, and if they have all of the authorizations that they need, they could fix the problem in 15 years, if everything went well. That means it's really 20 years. The Army Corps is consistent. When I spoke with them about three months ago, they told me they could fix the problem in 15 years if everything went well, because they still don't have their authorization or their money. It's going to cost about $10 billion to fix this. And the majority of that money must come from the federal government, because the Army Corps of Engineers, US Army Corps of Engineers, is the one that built and maintains the canals, and they have to be the lead on this. And the problem is, we're getting so much federal money for the Everglades, coming back and asking for more money to fix this, you know, they're not really paying attention. But if we don't, all of South Florida, from maybe Jupiter, maybe a little further southwest Palm, but from middle or north of Palm Beach, all the way down to Homestead, is going to be flooded every time it rains. So, and by the way, I don't know how to fix global sea level rise. I just don't. I mean, it's a big issue. But we know how to fix this issue. What you have to do is put in a bunch of big giant pumps where the salinity control barriers are. You have to make the walls of the canals higher to increase the carrying capacity, and then deal with the little canal, to have to use pumps to get the little canals into the big canals. It's not rocket science. We know how to fix it, but we can't do anything until the federal government decides that they're going to put that money in the federal budget. So, I'm going to give financial advice. I probably shouldn't, but I'm going to give you investment advice. Invest in companies that build arcs and houseboats, because there's almost nothing we can do anymore that will stop, I mean, assuming that the level is continued to rise the way that they are in give or take 13 years, we will be unable to drain. And the Army Corps says, if they have all of their money today and all of the authorization, which they don't, it'll take, best-case scenario, 15. Not that good in math, but I know that 13 years minus 15 years is negative two years. So, there's no way of avoiding the flooding. What we have to do is minimize it. So, I urge all of you to contact your congressional delegation, which I think is, I think out here is Debbie Wasserman Schultz?
Yes.
But particularly the two US senators as well, because Debbie's familiar with this already. But contact them and tell them how critical it is to your city that the Army Corps get the funding that they need for the restudy, because it's not rock, I mean, it's not something we don't know how to fix. I don't, I can't tell you how to fix sea level rise. I can tell you how to fix this. It's higher walls and pumps, but it's also $10 billion, half of which must come from the federal government. the federal government. I am happy to answer any questions about either anything I've mentioned or anything else. And let me close before this by saying, I only really represent now half of southwest ranches. My district is Dykes Road east to 441. But I don't care. I mean, I really, I don't care what your ethnicity is, I don't care what your political party is, I don't care what part of southwest ranches you live in. If there's anything I can do to help anybody here, call me. I'm not hard to find. And I think most of you have my cellphone. If not, I know he does, you know, I'm happy to, you know, give that to any of the elected officials here. And if there's any questions, Mr. Mayor, I'm happy to answer them.
Very good. Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Senator. Do we have any questions? Yeah.
Senator, you mentioned the $15 billion.
Yeah.
We need to fix the problem.
The $15 billion to fix the problem. Is that just, excuse me? $10 billion, 15 years.
$10 billion, okay. Is that just for Broward, or is that from Jupiter south to Homestead to fix the problem?
No, that's southeast, southeast Florida.
Okay, good.
So it's not just Broward, it's actually more Dade than us, but it's, you can't fix one without the other, really. So it's $10 billion to fix it. Now, by the way, I'm guessing it's $10 billion. They told me it was $6 billion, but that was four years ago. So I pulled $10 billion out of the air because I guarantee you, if it was four or five years ago, it was six. And maybe now they'll say it's eight or nine, but whatever number they tell us it'll be, it's going to cost more than that. We won't know that.
Good, thank you.
Anything else? Any other topic?
Yeah, Senator Geller.
Yeah.
Hi, David Kozinski, District 4, Sunshine Ranches. Your staff had told me that you're an environmentalist, and I really appreciate that. Every member of this town council and our residents are adamantly opposed to this waste-to-energy incinerator that is being proposed.
I was assuming I was going to get questions on this.
On Sterling Road, at Sheridan.
So I'm ready.
And it's not necessarily for our position, the NIMBY issue, not in my backyard. It's outdated technology. And, you know, talk about an impermeable layer to keep the waste from polluting our groundwater. A lot of our residents lived here in the 80s when we had Vista View and the problems that caused from Vista View. They were, the residents were told to buy bottled water, and these are horse owners told to buy bottled water for their horses. We had residents that had cancer. We had, one of my friends had to put five of her horses down because of cancer. So we're hoping that you'll agree with us that this is outdated technology and help us move toward a zero-waste program. Gainesville has it, and it's working for Gainesville. I think it can work for us in Broward County. Thank you.
Thank you. Let me address the whole incinerator slash solid waste slash other issue. The issue of what to do with solid waste is one of the biggest issues facing South Florida. As, again, Jim can tell you, I chair the South Florida Regional Planning Council. I'm in my third year as chair of that. Normally, I don't think anybody's had, what, more than one year before. The last October, we did a major eight-hour joint meeting between the South Florida Regional Planning Council, which is Monroe, Dade, and Broward, and the Treasure Coast Regional Planning Council, which is Palm Beach, Martin, Indian River, and St. Lucie Counties, specifically on the subject of solid waste. We are doing a follow-up in, I don't have the exact date, six or eight weeks, which is going to be focusing specifically on recycling. And one of the issues is, we just don't know what we're going to be doing with our solid waste. And let me briefly touch on recycling because I think that this is what David was talking about. If we can, I discussed this issue because I'm aware of the concern here in southwest ranches with this. But that's not the only reason. But if we are able to reach 75% recycling, it is unlikely that we would need to build another burner at all, which is what is being discussed right now. The whole issue of recycling is incredibly complicated. Many of you, I don't know, have any of you been on the commission for more than 10 years? Okay, so you may remember back when local governments actually made money off of recycling. These days, recycling is not cheaper than landfill, it is more expensive than landfill. And that's for a number of reasons. One is trying to stop buying or use plastic. But more importantly, people don't know how to recycle, and we haven't made it easy. Broward County has been using what's convenient, something called single-stream recycling, where you mix your paper and your plastic and your glass and your metal, and you put it all in one blue bin. And it costs a lot of money to sort that out. And additionally, there's a lot of contamination. A lot of people don't know what they'll do. Instead of putting clean paper in, they'll put pizza boxes in, which have oil, they'll put Saran Wrap in, thinking it's plastic. When that causes, it gets caught in the gears of the recycling machine. You're not supposed to be recycling that. One of the alternatives that the county has is to increase recycling. But we need to understand, it is cheaper to bury it, to just put it in a landfill today than it is to do proper recycling. But I think from an environmental viewpoint, it is better to do that because of the long-term ramifications of landfilling. And by the way, everybody's talking about, you know, reducing CO2 emissions because of global warming. Methane, which comes out of landfills, is a more potent cause of global warming than the CO2 you get from burning fossil fuels. So we would like to do what we can to prevent that. Now, I can't give you a promise that we're going to be able to reach 75% recycling. I can tell you that, and Councilmember Kozinski, is that?
Yes, perfect.
Okay. Said that this is the plan. There is no plan right now. The county and the League of Cities has agreed to create a committee. We have not yet created the committee. We have not yet agreed on the legal framework for creating the committee. There have been a number of fights over that. We haven't figured out, once the committee is created, what studies they're going to do, nor do we know now what they're going to recommend. To me, if we're going to have a burner, we currently have one burner in, we used to have a burner up in Mount Trashmore, which is kind, it's unincorporated, but near Pompano Deerfield. That burner was decommissioned about 10 years ago, and there's nothing there. It's been removed, there's a valley where it used to be. But that land is zoned for a burner. We do have one burner going, it's right here, well, not right here, it's up by State Road 84 and 441, but the county does not own that. At one point, the county did own that, and it was given to Waste Management a number of years ago, sold to Waste Management. I think that was a mistake. And so that's the only burner now. If we need a second burner, and we don't know if we're going to need one, I'm hoping we can avoid another one at all, then you get to the question of location. And to me, it seems like the 441 and 441 and 84, south of 84, is already southwest Broward. It doesn't make sense to me that if we are going to have a second one, we would have two in southwest Broward, as opposed to one in the south and one in the north, because it's cheaper for the cities in the north to take it to the north and cities in the south to take it to the south. The response that I have received from the Commissioner, Commissioner Farr, who happens to live in Hollywood, which is in the east, is, well, instead of north-south, we'll make it east-west, and the plant in 441 is really in east Broward.
Really?
And I said, I kind of think it's surrounded by Davie. And I've never heard Davie referred to as east Broward. So there may be a fight over the location if we do that. Now, one thing I would suggest to you, I had scheduled a trip, but I came down with bronchitis, so, and I'm actually, I'm getting over it now, I am over it, I'm almost off the prednisone, you have to taper it down. But I was going up to Palm Beach to take a look at their facility. Their facility, right now, has multimillion-dollar homes a mile away from it, and they swear that there's no impact from that, that the technology versus, I mean, the old Wingate incinerator in downtown Lauderdale, which was closed 40 years ago, or the Trash, which is now, I guess, a housing development right across from us. They're just, the technologies are light-years different. And I know that the League of Women Voters is taking a trip up there first week of September. And I would recommend, I don't have the details, but if you want, Andy, I can get you that. If you ask, I will get that information to forward to you. I would recommend that you consider going with them. I was, when I was going to go up, and I am, I told them I'm going to reschedule, I was going to be inviting Jim and the rest of the, because Jim serves on the South Florida Regional Planning Council. I was going to invite the entire South Florida Regional Planning Council, but I very smartly checked with my town attorney, or county attorney, before I did, who said, no, you can't do that, that would be a violation of sunshine. So, because we'd have to record the meeting, and you can't really record while you're walking around, so I don't think you can have, you can go up there as a commission, but you may want to schedule a series of individual trips up there or check with your city attorney as to what his legal advice is. So, in summary, if we can do enough recycling, we won't need a second burner at all. If we do need a second burner, to me, it makes more sense to put it in the northeast because I don't accept that putting one in unincorporated Broward but near southwest ranches while the other one is in 441, south of 84, to me, that's the same quadrant of the county, although I recognize somebody living in east Hollywood would say, no, that's out west. And there is no plan yet because the committee to draft the plan hasn't been formed yet.
Right.
At the end of the day, we're going to, we may or may not have to put one somewhere. If we do, I'm going to not promise you what I'm going to do until I read the reports. It just seems to me it would make more economic sense to put them in different quadrants of the county. That's a long answer, but...
Yeah, no, we appreciate you addressing the issue straight on.
I hope you see that I've actually spent a lot of time on this issue.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely. And certainly, we as a town have spent a lot of time on it. We have a lot of folks involved, we have some great grassroots resources involved. And I, you know, I've been going around talking to a lot of the municipalities around here. A lot of folks have been doing a lot of work in a lot of different ways, trying to kind of work through this and understand the best path forward. And we fully understand, you know, what you're saying, that, you know, this is, we're early in the game at this point. No decisions have been made, and we're really early in the game. My, you know, my perspective on it, while I appreciate, and I would certainly, you know, out of absolute sincerity, I would breathe a sigh of relief if it turned out that it was the north and south options. Also, in complete sincerity, even that, I would say, is not the right solution. And I, you know, as we've talked about it, as we've done research, the, kind of the, what we're, the conclusions we're coming to is that the waste-to-energy plant is on the tail end of its life cycle. That regardless of where we are, if we were to put that in, we would, we would be on the tail end of a technology that's dying and it's not going to be sustainable 50 years from now. 50 years from now, they're not going to be putting in more waste-to-energy plants, I don't believe. I believe the problem is bigger than that, and it demands a bigger solution than that, which is very difficult for us right now, but it is the zero-waste solution. And we've got to learn how to recycle, to use the old term, better than we have in the past. And it's going to be painful. You pointed out some great points, you know, we can't, we can't do the one convenient container and throw it all in there and expect that it's all going to come out clean. It's just not going to happen that way. So we're going to have to break it out, we're going to have to do it more carefully, we're going to have to, you know, change the way we do it, we're going to have to significantly educate our residents and our community. And, but I think, I think one of the, one of the important things to call out of it is not only, not only are we doing the right thing, the thing that will get us past 50 years, get us past 100 years, something that we can, you know, show as leadership that we're doing the right thing for our kids and our grandkids. But I think it will also have a very positive financial impact immediately because we're not building these huge plants and maintaining them. And I think that this, this type of a solution will be much more cost-effective. We'll wait and see, we'll wait and see, you know, we'll see the studies and we'll see them come out. What worries me more than anything else is I hear very little conversation about that right now. I hear a lot more conversation about the waste-to-energy plants than I do about zero-waste. So I think we've got some time to educate and to, you know, kind of work with the county. I think the county will start to see that their residents are going to start asking more and more, what about that zero-waste solution? Because we all recognize that in the long term, that is the solution, frankly, that is the solution. Whether we choose to do it now or we choose an older technology, 50, 100 years from now, that's what we're going to have. So I say, let's, you know, let's move forward with it, let's push it forward now, let's be a leader rather than a follower. And that's, that's really where, where I think we're at. And we certainly would appreciate, you know, additional research in that area and some thought and conversation there.
Mr. Mayor, the only place I would disagree with what you've said is if you actually believe that the county hasn't been paying a lot of attention to that, because I can tell you that maybe it hasn't been as publicized as the waste-to-energy, but I promise you, there's been a lot of attention. And I would strongly encourage, again, and if you'll contact my office, the South Florida Regional Planning Council, which I chair, has scheduled a meeting, I believe it's in November, specifically, again, another seven-hour meeting. It's going to be at the Performing Arts Center. They have the, I think it's called the Hazenga Room, it's the one outside where the Broward Workshop meets. And it's going to be specifically on recycling. It is a joint meeting of the South Florida and Treasure Coast Regional Planning Councils. We're expecting hundreds of experts from throughout South Florida, from Monroe County all the way up to Indian River and St. Lucie Counties, as well as state, national experts, specifically focusing on recycling. So I don't want you to think we're not paying attention to that because we are, and I know, I picked this topic, well, actually, I picked half. I'm the Chair of South Florida, the Chair of the Treasure Coast, and I got together with staffs, and this is the topic that the two of us agreed on. So I can also tell you, there's certain areas, glass and metal are both profitable and easy to recycle. Paper, much less so. Plastic is the biggest problem. And, for example, the Florida Legislature has made it illegal to mandate the elimination of single-use plastics, like the... of single-use plastics, like the, you know, everybody will go and buy a case of disposable, yeah, bottles of water. That's a substantial part of the problem, and the Legislature has prohibited local governments from making those illegal, and that is part of the problem, the single biggest problem in recycling is plastics.
Yeah, I agree with you. I think the, I think a lot of the paper issues will go away when we don't mix the recycling elements. Yeah, plastic is an issue that we have work to do on a number of different fronts.
Matt Owen, glass or, can be done profitably even today.
Yeah.
We were just over at the recycling facility, we've had some resident tours of the facility, it's phenomenal. There's not much money in glass right now. It's aluminum, it's steel, you're right about the plastics, they gum up the work.
They're the worst of it.
Yeah.
So, are there any additional questions?
Just a little follow-up here. The, I hate to say that, if there would be a place to put it, which I really don't want it at all, the more preferable place would be where there's saltwater contamination to the aquifer, as opposed to freshwater, where people are drinking off of that fresh water.
The problem is, you need a large enough area, and there's basically no place east of 95, which is where you have the saltwater intrusion already, but there's no place east of 95 where you can get that much land.
And then, I just Googled the address where the Wheel Abraider site is, and according to Google, and I don't know how reliable this address is, it says it's 4400 South State Road 7, unincorporated Broward County.
That's correct, that's the intersection of 441 and 84.
Broward County Property Appraiser has this property owned by the Broward County Commission.
The, I don't...
And Lori told me that, so that's all I know.
We may own the property, but we don't own the facility.
The equipment, alright.
So...
It's fine, makes sense.
Okay. And by the way, speaking about Lori Parish, can you tell her, please, that I know about this?
She's just making sure.
Yes, I know, she has aggressively made sure, and I love Lori, but just tell her I know about this, okay?
It's going to cost you.
Alright, is there any other question?
Thank you, Senator.
Of course.
Yes, Senator, just a couple of things.
Whatever.
So, we are starting our own grassroots effort here to understand the waste-technology industry between the incinerators right on through to zero waste, very complicated degree. We had our first organizational meeting last night.
Mm-hmm.
Our residents are organizing around us, whether we show the leadership or not, but we are.
They've contacted me.
Since you're only a mile and a half from here, we have our next meeting, we haven't decided upon a name yet, but we're going to be meeting four weeks, it's September the 13th, we'll send you an invitation.
Send me an invite, I can't guarantee I'll be at that one, but I will be at one of your next two or three meetings, that I can promise, because you're close, I'm not coming to every meeting, but I will come sporadically when invited.
We'll hold you to all that. But the important thing is, I think you just went through kind of a high-level overview that none of us can do yet, we're just getting engaged now, and I think you could probably come in for ten or fifteen minutes and answer probably ninety percent of the questions.
There's no way it'll be ten or fifteen minutes, but I'm happy to come anyhow.
It'll be thirty, I know, but I'm being like the Army Corps.
Let me be clear, I am happy to come, as I've said, I don't care which part of, whether you're in my district or not, I regard myself as representative of Southwest Ranches, and I will be happy to attend.
We see it the same way, but the important thing is, we had forty people here last night, and they are all very concerned about the potential...
I thought they were going to be here tonight about this also, so I came in ready for bear.
We'll bring you back, thank you.
Anything else? If not, to, again, anytime you need me, Mr. Mayor Yuna had to reach me, Jim knows how to reach me, Andy knows how to reach me, any of you that want my cell, please give it to them, any of the elected, anything you need, call me, and I look forward to seeing you two weeks from today, where you can express these same issues to the county administration, that will be at the meeting that I've invited all of you to. It's a pleasure to be here, anything I can do, let me know.
Awesome, thank you, Senator, appreciate it. Okay, we have one more guest with us this evening, Xavier Jackson, if you could please come up this evening, we're thrilled to have you here, we want to hear about your project, and the floor is all yours.
Well, hello, my name is Xavier Jackson, I am from Troop 160, and I, and my Eagle project was, my Eagle project was to make two, no, make, yeah, make two flags and put them both up at the Rolling Oaks Park in that front area, and, I basically want to ask for donations for the project. If any, if anyone from the council or the audience could give donations, it would be greatly appreciated.
Yeah, yeah, we appreciate you coming out, we've had, we've had a number of Eagle Scouts that have done some amazing projects, some of them are right out front here, and others are spread throughout our, our community in different parks, in different locations, and thank you for, for doing your project in here, we're looking forward to seeing the flagpole, and yes, we definitely, if anybody would like to contribute to this effort, it certainly is something that, that helps out our community, so, why don't you kind of sit in the back, and I think you may get, you may get some donations.
But before you go to the back, we'll start it off here. Gentlemen, dig deep, dig deep!
Thank you.
Here, 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 take that with you, I won't offer it a second time.
Before I forget today, I will, I am hoping for nearly $400, around $400, but any amount is very appreciated.
Yeah, thank you.
David alone.
Thank you, alright, awesome.
Good luck on it.
You know, we're very fortunate in the town to have these Eagle Scouts that are doing just a wide variety of projects in a wide variety of places, and it's just another way to connect with the community, and for the community to connect with the town, so, we're thrilled about that, and appreciate all the Eagle Scouts that have done their work in our community, so, thank you, Xavier. All right, the next item is public comment, if we can, we have some items for public comment?
Yes, Mayor, we have two speakers for public comments, I guess the first speaker is Mohammed Abid, okay, and then followed by Noel Hollingsworth.
Good evening, esteemed members of the township, my name is Mohammed Abid, I'm a resident of Southwest Ranches, and I'm also the President of Circle S Estates Homeowners' Association. I come before you to inform you of what that said, our concerns are, we have several, a string of robberies in our community recently, that have caused a lot of hardships for several of the community members. We all moved to Southwest Ranches for safety, security, we've been told that there will be no gates allowed in our community, which we understand, there is rules in place for a reason, and we understand that. However, there's been unlawful entry into vehicles, into homes, recently, there was a home that was entered through the garage while the people were sleeping inside, this has caused a lot of, you know, we have a lot of scared residents in our community. The major thing is, is because we are so close to I-75, I mean, Southwest Ranches in general is a target for a lot of these thieves, they come out west, there's a lot of, you know, high-profile houses, a lot of nice cars, so they come out west, assuming they have easy access, and then because we're so close to the highway, we're the first community that they see. So, we were hoping to propose a auto-open gate with a LPR attached to it, a license plate reader, to hopefully deter some of these thieves that come into the neighborhood. We also have heavy, heavy solicitation that we've been facing for the past, since I've been there, since last year, you know, we've had people coming in selling lobsters, selling steaks, all kinds of things out of their vehicles, which we do not feel should be, you know, allowed in our community. We are in the process of putting signage, no trespassing, you know, neighborhood watch, et cetera, we're going to do whatever we can to deter some of these things, but we are hoping that the township could provide some advice, some guidance into what I can go back to the community members and tell them how we can protect our community, because, you know, before you, I stand pleading, like, I don't know what else to do, I don't know what to tell them, that you allow, that you won't allow, so it's kind of one of those things where we're unsure, and there's a lot of misinformation out there, so that's really the concern that we have, and that's why I'm here today.
Awesome, yeah, I appreciate you coming.
Thank you.
Yeah, Noel.
Noel Hollingsworth, 199th Avenue, in reply to the previous speaker, Southwest Ranches does not believe in gated communities. We have one, and at that time, we stated, there'll never be another one. It takes a five oh vote of the council for that to happen, in addition to other things. What we do allow is that each individual property can be fenced and gated, and my property is that way. I have a gate in the front, and I have fencing around the entire perimeter of my property, and so do most other people that put the security into effect, and if they want to, they can either open it by hand, or they can put a clicker on it and have it mechanically opened. That is a solution that we have for any homeowner that wishes to protect their property completely. We do not say you cannot fence your property in the front, Southwest Ranches allows that. So, sir, that is your answer, and as far as I'm concerned, your only answer, because history has already said what the town is going to do. Thank you.
Thanks, Noel. Sure, if you just, we need you to fill out, if you could speak, and then, and then, and then come up to the mic, and when you get done, you can just please fill out a form so we...
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you for, thank you for...
No problem, I mean, we're here, this is why we're here, this is why we're here, we want to hear from the residents, so...
I apologize. My name is Joe Fidalgo, I also live in Circle S Estates, and I understand this gentleman may have been here for a lot more years than me, however, as I, excuse me, sorry, I'm a little upset by that.
It's okay, yeah, yeah, no worries.
My wife and I also moved up here for peace and tranquility and quiet, and to us, aesthetics is also important. If everybody in our community starts to put up all these different fences and all these different gates, is that really a solution for aesthetically providing good-quality neighborhoods for the community? At the end of the day, we came here with our children, our grandparents, to be able to walk down the street quietly and peacefully, and for us, and I applaud what this gentleman is saying, a simple gate, by the way, our Circle S Estates is nothing but four cul-de-sacs, so there's no through, through-way streets, there's no ins and outs, if anybody's going in there, it really is because you live there, or because you don't, you shouldn't be there. So, as I look at the situation rationally, I, I think it would save the county money from a police scenario, because you would avoid some of the situations going in and out of those neighborhoods. I think aesthetically, it makes a huge difference than forty-two different fences. That, to me, doesn't seem like the solution. Property value going up can only help the county. Southwest Ranches is growing, and I understand why certain things may have been done in the past, but if it is growing, people like us, and by the way, if you go two blocks up the road, and there's a gated, there's a lot of gated communities, what happens is that then Southwest Ranches becomes like a dinner bell. Okay, there's security over here, there's gates over here, I've got all these new homes over here, and no gates at all, and no security allowed, unless there's forty-two different gates. I'm using forty-two because there's forty-two brand-new homes, all of high-value in that neighborhood. So, I just think it's time to think a little bit outside of the box, to your point, where are we going to be twenty-five years from now, or fifty years from now? And from what I see, he's right, we're very close to I-75, but we're also very close to Weston, which has a lot of gated communities. So, if I'm a criminal, and I go on the, on the north side of Griffin, and there's gated communities, and I go on the south side of Griffin, and there's no gated community, no streetlights, and only three police officers, you're almost inviting a situation. We're not asking for anything that wouldn't be aesthetically pleasing, where, and I think it makes sense from a police, from a safety, from a family environment, so, you know, I really would ask that we find a way to address it, and see if there's a way to help us, because we did come here for all the right reasons, we did come here, and, and we know and we see that Southwest Ranches is growing, that we're not the only subdivision that's, that's here. So, along the way, we just need a little bit of help to make us feel, feel safe.
Got it, thank you.
Alright, and thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Next speaker, Mayor, is John Garrati, followed by Alberta Peretti, and lastly, Tim Lasky.
Good evening, everyone, oops, took it right off.
There you go.
Yeah, right, a little excited. I missed yesterday's, I guess, gathering, I was out of town, I apologize, I was, I'm assuming it was for the incinerator, which is the topic of the year, I guess, which is super important to everyone. I have a question, hopefully it can be addressed, I know some of it's legal, but there was a meeting, closed-door meeting, a few weeks ago regarding the problem with the Pembroke Pines lawsuit, I just wanted to, a few of the residents in our area were just wondering whatever happened with that, because I know there was a meeting that wasn't open to the public. Another thing I wanted to address, the gentleman from Circle S...
I just, you're gonna, don't, don't take the time away from him, but I just want to be clear, because that sounds terrible, like we did something illegal, it's a shade session, it's called a shade session, and when you have a strategy session with your attorneys, you can't broadcast that out to the world, and so, it's a shade session, everything there was recorded, and it's available, once all the dust settles, it will be available to the public to see.
Got it, I didn't mean that derogatory, I saw it posted.
It sounded that way, I didn't want it to be clear.
No, no, I knew that, I actually questioned it for a second, but I'm like, I'm sure it's a process, we just wanted clarity, because, you know, not everything gets spoken of, you guys have a hundred things to do.
Absolutely.
I did want to address what the gentleman from Circle S Estates said, I've been here twenty-two years, and, you know, things change, demographics change, everything changes, I mean, nothing stays still. Communication, I'm like the biggest believer in communication, if you can communicate with your residents and have everybody's phone number, and, that's what we do on our side of town, it just really helps, I know that's a small thing, you know, it's a new neighborhood, it's brand-new houses, multimillion-dollar homes, it's a challenge, it's, security's a challenge, everything's a challenge in a community that has limited police resources and, you know, limited everything, because we're not, we're not as big as everyone else, but, you know, just, just a couple of things that, you know, neighbor, neighborhood being a neighborhood, not, not just pointing fingers at everybody, because that's, that happens a lot here. Just be together, help, help when you don't have to help somebody, just communicate, know your neighbor's phone number, that's what we do. We help everybody, the Ring apps, we have so many dogs and cats and horses and even a missing kid, you know, "Hey, have you seen my daughter?" I don't even have Ring, but everybody communicates through Ring apps, even if you don't have Ring as your provider, so, technology, whatever you have to do, it works, every little bit and pieces. I know there was something else I was going to ask, but I've been on the road for a few weeks, and I'm just a little tired, but...
Welcome back.
Thank you. I think that's all I have for now, and if I figure something out, I know how to reach you guys, I know how to find you.
That's true, that's true, and we know how to find you.
You guys have a good one.
Great, thank you.
Next speaker, Alberta Peretti?
Hi, how are you? Thanks for allowing me to talk, so, sorry for harassing you with the Circle S topic.
That's alright.
I also live over there, and, you know, first of all, I would like to understand the historical decision, why was, you know, this, because there may be reason that we as a community may understand. On the other hand, it's extremely concerning for us, I think that the majority of our houses are using all those gadgets that he mentioned before. I think that the majority of our houses are using all those gadgets that he mentioned before. And two nights ago, more than six houses were rubber. Uh, we have our kids living in the inside. And I think there are multiple reasons why a gate will be better than just having each house fenced from cosmetic point of view and security. So we're just asking to consider that option, okay? Uh, we understand that historically there has been some value. I think from a financial point of view, if we could continue to have these problems, it's gonna affect the community. Uh, gates may prevent that, may help the police, and it will keep our families and kids safe. Thank you.
Thank you for coming out. Jim.
You know, we've got a lot of certified, bona fide idiots coming in in this country. Kidnap and extortion, home invasions, okay? He had several houses he just talked about in his last commentary, okay, that were hit at the same time. There are groups of guys that go and they scout out, they surveil all kinds of fancy housing developments, and they target them. Uh, you know, give the guys a break, let them put a gate up there. I don't see any reason wrong with it. Um, I know what the, what you've said in the past, but, you know, crime has really changed and evolved since we did all these other, uh, obligations of only putting up one gated community, which I, I understand is landmark. And I know a particular officer that was on a team that tracked these people. That once they leave here, go through Weston into Palm Beach, they go to another state. They do the whole thing. They work a cycle all the way around the East Coast. And they're very successful at it. These guys are primary targets. You gotta give them a break or give them a gun. And they gotta be quick enough to use it. So that's another problem we don't want. So reconsider the, the policies of the past. It, it won't work for everybody. I don't expect you to put one on 188th Avenue, but there's a strange bunch of dudes that live on 188th Avenue. As you know, we're, we're not really that concerned about it, but these guys are targets. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Last speaker. Great. Thank you all. Um, what, well, we'll go through our council comments, and the council members may choose or not choose to speak on that topic. I know I will speak on the topic, so if you would just wanna hang out a little longer, we'll, uh, we'll address it a little bit, so. All right, council member comments, uh...
I'll go.
All right. Thank you, Gary.
Okay, I'll start off with, uh, some, I'll, I'll answer one of your concerns, uh, towards the end. But, um, I'll start off with just some community, uh, notices. Um, our next has-met at the barn's gonna be on the, uh, twenty-third of September. And we're gonna do shredding and, uh, perspicious dr- drop, and drop-off. Um, Town Hall's gonna be closed on the fourth of, uh, September for Labor Day. We have a photo contest, uh, currently going on for the calendar for this year. It's our eleventh year. Uh, it's Beauty in the Ranches. Um, the photos need to be submitted by the fifteenth of, uh, September here at, uh, Town Hall. Um, just an FYI for everybody, all the, uh, waste, uh, ILA documents are on the website. They're on the, uh, very end of the first page. You go down and click on garbage and recycling. And then at the bottom, it has a, a line where you open it up and it pops up with all the legal documents that have been, uh, come, uh, that are, uh, up to date on, on all of that. So everybody can bring, bring themselves up to speed on that, up to speed on that. Um, we have bingo going on for the Parks Board Foundation at the barn on, uh, the twenty-sixth. There's a few tickets available, uh, remaining. Dinner's also included on that. And, uh, real important, this, uh, coming Tuesday, the fifteenth, is our budget workshop. And I urge, uh, the residents to come out and, uh, let us know what you think about the budget. Uh, it's strictly a workshop. We're not, we're not gonna be making too many decisions there other than we're looking for ideas to, uh, implement projects or to lower projects and things of that move, you know, to massage the budget. Um, I will say, uh, next meeting, we have the, um, this is off-topic. We have the, uh, three, what we call the three-hundred-and-sixty-two-day fireworks ordinance is gonna be at our next meeting. So we'll be able to go over that. Uh, that's been long awaited, and I know everybody, uh, most of the, uh, ranchers, uh, horse owners and everybody wanna know about it. So that's coming up on the twenty-four, um, excuse me, on the twenty-fourth. Um, just briefly, I wanna address the whole gate issue, uh, with, uh, some suggestions and some ideas. Um, you guys are in HOA. You have, uh, uh, I don't know if you have meetings or you have dues or you have, uh, what have you. Um, we chose to not have gated communities out here in South, in, uh, Southwest Ranches. Uh, we wanted the openness. We did not want closed communities exclusiveness. Um, we, we, we're not Weston, we're not Pembroke Pines. Um, we know that from the get-go. Um, I can't see anybody on this council voting for a gated community. I need to let you guys know that right out the, right coming out of the gate, because they won't be here at the next election. I can tell you that right now. Um, some of the suggestions I would suggest to you guys is tomorrow, you could go out and hire a security guard in a car, armed with a radio, tomorrow, patrolling your community. You could do that tomorrow. And it works, because other places do it. This is just a suggestion. You also could set up a hotline with other people. I know this is not what you wanna hear, okay? I understand that. But this is, these are suggestions that actually do work. You can install your own LPR cameras. You can tie it into our network that we have. Our whole town is bracketed with LPR cameras. You can have your own private camera. Some people have, some communities have already done that. Inside the town where they have, it's part of, part of our system, they paid for the camera and they pay for the use and, uh, and, and it works in their, in their area, on their street. So all of that is available to you, just right off the bat. You don't need any special permission from us or anything like that. So I just wanna mention that to you all, that as far as a gate for a gated community, that's, that's never gonna happen. And, and I can honestly say that'll never happen, uh, no matter who's up here. I, and I, and I don't wanna paint any false pictures here with any of you all, you know, to, you know, give you any false hope or anything like that. You need to, you need to organize yourselves, uh, better, probably, probably not better, it's the wrong word. Uh, probably in a manner that where one, where one resident is affected, it affects everybody within your community. So if you have, if you have people running around, uh, soliciting, knocking on doors, trying to sell lobster tails, uh, meat, whatever, stuff like that, uh, you know, call the police. Write that in there. Call the police. You got trespassers. You know, those people will stop coming once the police start showing up. If you have security guards, they will, they're writing down their, uh, license plate numbers, they're calling the police also. You give them the parameters that, that you want to, uh, be enforced in your neighborhood, because you're paying their bill. Now, nobody wants to hear that, because they would rather have the town spend the money, uh, as opposed to the homeowner spend the money. But that is a simple fix if you put in a security guard, uh, twenty-four-seven in your community. And I just wanna throw that out there for your, for your all, for your all's consideration, so. And, uh, I'll close with that, Mayor.
Thank you, Gary. David.
Um, David Kozinski, Sunshine Ranches. Um, let me begin by saying I agree with Gary, what he just said, um, about the gate. Um, I have a resident on Holliday Trail where I live. He has a guard out every night as I drive down Holliday Trail. He has four cameras at the end of his driveway. And all of this was caused by mail thefts. And he has additional protection on his property. He's taking this responsibility on his own. Um, so, um, let me, um, go over some issues here. Uh, first of all, uh, as the town liaison for the, uh, or coun- for council for, um, the Rural Public Arts and Design Advisory Board. As Gary had mentioned, I'm gonna repeat. We got the Beauty in the Ranches Eleventh Annual Photo Contest. Your, submit your photos. Um, the deadline is September... Notice doesn't say the deadline. It's, it's in September. Notice doesn't have it. All right, well, the, the deadlines is September.
It's coming up.
It's coming up, all right. Uh, get your photos in. Your, your photos will be, uh, as an option on the, uh, calendar, for the town calendar, um, and as a possibility of being one of the covers for, uh, the new created, uh, Southwest Rancher Magazine, the updated, uh, photos for that. So it's a great contest. We have a lot of great photos from people in the town. Then we also have the Sixth Annual, uh, December Holiday Lights Contest. Uh, the registration forms are due December first, and awards will be presented Thursday, December seventh. And that's a great event. Uh, all of us council members get together. We, we have a, the fire truck show up at the people's homes that are the award winners. And we have people that participate with some beautiful holiday lights on their homes. Um, let's see, uh, going into the, uh, crime report. Let me begin by saying on July fourth, I had the honor to ride with, uh, Davie Police. And it was a big experience. I had a lot of action on mine. Now, my, my, uh, ride was from University East 441. It didn't involve Southwest Ranches. I wanted a lot more action. I think Southwest Ranches had an accident and some fireworks complaints. Uh, but I was very impressed that the officer I was riding with at every stoplight, he would, he wouldn't just sit there and wait for the light to turn green. He's looking every single car, and he's running the computer, running the tags on every single car to see whether there, there is the, uh, a warrant for the person or whether they're driving a suspended license. In fact, one of our stops involved, uh, a guy. We, uh, Davie Police ended up seizing his vehicle, because he was, his vehicle had an illegal sticker on the back. And he was driving with a permanently suspended license from March. And the, we were in the industrial area of Davie, and he sees this, uh, black SUV with blacked-out windows, and he says, "Let's go check that tag." Runs the tag, finds the, the tag was actually expired, but a tag sticker said it was valid. It was illegal sticker on there. Um, I was very, very impressed. And my, my issues that I, um, got to see, um, we got to do a couple of traffic stops. We had a couple of domestic violence calls. Uh, the one issue that was the longest was a vehicular homicide near the Hard Rock Casino. And the, the brightest point of it was a Saint Bernard rescue that had, uh, was terrified of the fireworks, uh, ended up in a canal, and because of the dog's thick hair, the only thing the dog was struggling is to keep his no, the tip of his nose out of the water. Um, if you look on the DRW, um, page twenty-nine, there is actually a photo of the law enforcement officers with the Saint Bernard. Um, I sent that over to Jared over at DRW. Um, now, um, where the citations in Southwest Ranches, District One, had three citations on US-27, none of them were speeding. Uh, District Two, twenty-four total citations, and this is for the month of July, twenty-four total citations, twenty of those were speeding. All of those speeding citations were issued on Griffin Road. District Three, thirty-one total tickets, eleven of those were speeding, and only one of those speeding tickets, uh, was on an interior road. Everything else was on Griffin. And District Four, Sunshine Ranches, uh, we had a hundred and nineteen total citations, one hundred speeding. And of those hundred speeding citations, five of those were on Sterling Road, the inter- internal road. Everything else was on Griffin. Um, the last thing is, um, I, I, I liked what, uh, Senator Geller had said about contacting our US senators about the, his number ten billion dollars, uh, for the Army Corps of Engineers. And is this something that maybe we can do a resolution and send to our senators in, in Washington?
Sure. Yeah.
I, I, I think that was, is that something everybody can be agree with, agree with? I, I think I'd, I'd like to have that drawn up.
Good idea.
Thank you. That wraps it up for me.
Thank you. Good. Jim?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, I, I will be brief. I, I wanna start out by saying thank you to the town staff, uh, to all the Davie town staff and to all our council members for putting this contract together. I know a ten-year contract seems like a long contract, but I really believe it will benefit Southwest Ranches and Davie. We have a great partnership, so thank you very much for that. I wanna say thank you to Russell for the class yesterday. Uh, very informative. People from all over the world, if I'm not mistaken, were involved. Uh, all different countries here in the United States. Several towns have accomplished that seventy, seventy-five, eighty percent recycling, and we can use them as models here. I think that the idea of burning is terrible, like everybody says. This council will fight to see that that doesn't happen. And, uh, you know, there are alternative ways to, to, uh, get rid of the waste. The trailers, uh, the mobile trailers, we have two mobile trailers, I think I repeat this every, uh, month, that you can request to be put in your area to slow people down. All you have to do is contact myself or call Town Hall and ask for Tom. They're usually left there for two weeks. They, they only flash and tell you that you're going too fast. The one that we have out on one hundred and eighty-sixth is a sign that records speed, date, time, uh, everything. And the police department can use that to better police that area. But the signs I'm talking about are just reminders to the people in the neighborhood that they're going too fast when they start to, when they start to flash. And, um, I, I guess I wanna say to the residents there in Circle S to get together with each other, to come up with some kind of a plan to work together. Uh, everybody gets Ring, everybody gets whatever it takes to do that. Like you said, hire a security guard or call the Davie Police Department and request more units to come through, you know? Uh, it, it's a tough situation, but the town of Southwest Ranches, as Councilman Jablonski said, will not have a gated community, you know? Sorry to say that, all right? With that, Mayor, that's all I have.
Thank you, Jim.
Please. Good evening, folks. Uh, David was doing his homework, and he found out that the deadline on the photo contest is September the fifth. And, um, I think he mentioned it, but the photos themselves are used for all sorts of things around town, as well as the, uh, we pu- we publish an annual, uh, calendar, and the photos that go into it are beautiful. And it really shows off our town in a very positive way. So thank you, David. All right, two other things real quick. Um, everybody likes to complain about their taxes, but they don't wanna do anything about it. Next Tuesday is our annual budget hearing. This is the opportunity for everybody who cares to show up to give us their input on the town's budget for the next year. We will be discussing it, and this is where we do the most amount of our rearranging. We'll be, we'll have more public hearings on the budget and, uh, what the, uh, what the taxes will be for next year. But that meeting is where the majority of the discussion goes on, and we generally will issue, um, instructions to the town financial administrator on things we'd like to see changed. But if you want to provide us with input, please come on out. Uh, if you're a financial person, even if you're not, I mean, this is, this is your money that we're, we're managing. But, uh, the town can provide you a copy of the budget, uh, no charge. You just have to call Town Hall, nine-five-four, four-three-four, zero-zero-zero-eight, uh, and request a copy. And Russell, did we get a chance to put it on the town website? I haven't looked, so I'm not sure.
Yes, it is there. We would prefer people download it from there.
Of course. Uh, where, what part of the, uh, the town website is it on?
It would be under the finance department page.
Okay. So there's a section, there's a tab at the top that says departments. Look for finance. And right on the front page, it's got the budget, right? Perfect. So again, that, that, uh, that hearing or that workshop, I'm sorry, is Tuesday the fifteenth, that's next Tuesday, at seven PM. You heard us talking a lot in the beginning about, uh, what's going on with trash, incinerators, no-plan, plan, rumors, all sorts of things. We're trying to eliminate rumors, and, and like you heard tonight, we, we want information from the appropriate sources. There are a lot of people in our town concerned about this. Who wants an incinerator? And as, as the mayor said a few minutes ago, this isn't a "not in my backyard," as, as he had very appropriately put it. This, this is like buying a... put it. This is like buying a 1950's car, not as a muscle car, but it's something you're going to drive back and forth to work every day. It just doesn't make any sense. It's old technology. You're going to get three miles to the gallon as opposed to 50 or an electric car. But this technology is outdated, and with all the crazy weather changes we're having, do you really want to take a chance on another incinerator that's going to put out literally thousands of tons of contamination on an annual basis? We know this because there's incinerators all over the United States. We have something that we've termed the Solid Waste Task Force. As you heard me mention to him, we met last night. We had tremendous participation. We're going to need to do a lot, though, so we need everybody's help on this. We want to reach out to the school board, because there's actually 40 schools within 10 miles of the site they're proposing out here. We want to get the PTAs involved, because generally, it's moms and dads that have kids in school and don't want their kids out in a playground that's being constantly blanketed with contamination falling from the sky from now until 25, 30 years after it's built, when they start falling apart. So, we have another meeting. Like I said earlier, we had one last night. We're going to have one next month. So, if you'd like to participate and help out, we're going to be meeting here at Town Hall on September the 13th at 7:00 PM. And we would love your support and your help on this, because this really makes a big difference to all of us if they do decide to put it out here at 27 and Sheridan Street. That's all I have for tonight. Thank you, Mayor.
Great, thank you, Bob. All right, a few items that I wanted to touch on. First of all, Jim, thank you once again. I was, enjoyed the cool weather of Colorado a couple weeks ago. You did a great job, I heard, so thank you. Appreciate you stepping in. Really do. One of the things, speaking of the waste-to-energy situation, is I've been trying to go around and meet with a number of the elected officials for our neighboring communities. I've met with Miramar Weston, a number of them, and I still have more lined up. But I just wanted to give a quick report that I did meet with the Vice Mayor, Iris Siple of Pembroke Pines, and had a great meeting with her. I think, I think we've, you know, we obviously have had issues in the past with Pembroke Pines, but I've got to tell you that I think the page is turning. I think we're in a new place. I know we're in a new place. And the conversation that I had with her was exceptional. We talked about a number of projects that we can partner on and that will serve both our communities well. I feel really good that we will move forward in a very positive way, so I want to report that back. And I think one of those projects that certainly we are aligned with and can work together on is this waste-to-energy or the lack thereof. So, we still have a lot of work to do with us, but we're building some good alliances around the western part of Broward County, and there's still more meetings to come, so things are going in a good, a good way. But I also wanted to just give a thank you to Iris for getting together. And honestly, she initiated the call, which I sincerely appreciate. And then, and then we got together for lunch and had a good, a really good talk. So, appreciate her reaching out and, and just, I think we're going to be really able to move forward with Pembroke Pines as a partner in a lot of things. So, that was great. Finally, I did want to touch on this gate issue. So, first of all, I want to thank you all for coming out. Too many times, we have situations like this, and we hear about it through Facebook, we hear about it through rumblings here, there, or the other way, you know? We can't really have a great dialogue. Not that this is the best dialogue, but I'll get to that. But for you to come here personally, to give up an evening of your time, to present your case means a lot to me. I know it means a lot to the entire council. I think there's a lot we can do. Gary mentioned a few things. I think there's a lot of other things. There's also, there's a lot of things. I won't go through them. But what I would like to do is, I would like to come out and meet with your community, come out there. I'd like to kind of walk the property. I'll be clear that, as you've heard up here, the gate issue, it's not, it's not going to go. But there's a lot of things we can do. I don't want you to leave here feeling like, you know, this is a no. This is not a no. This is, it's a no to the gate, but I'm telling you, there's a lot we can do. And I think if we sit down, we walk that area, we look at it, we see what we can do. I think there's some things that you'll be pleased with. I think there's some things that will make a difference. And I also think there's some things that financially the town can help partner with, partner with you on. So, we do have safety grants that we've used in other parts of town, that we could very possibly use there. There's a little bit of paperwork involved, but if you all wanted to make that investment, we can, that's an option to us. We've talked about a bunch of things, but there's some other things as well. So, my number is 954... That's okay. 954-296-6018. Please give me a call. 954-296-6018. Absolutely. Please give me a call. Let's set up a time where I can come out there. Let's walk the property. Let's talk about different ideas and how we can partner to come up with a solution together. Okay? All right. Awesome. Thank you for coming out. I mean that sincerely.
Excuse me, Mayor.
Yeah.
Would you include me with that, if you would?
I can't.
You can't. You're tricked. Thank you.
But I'm, you know, but I appreciate you bringing that up, because I think, you know, the council is here to help. We're not, we're not here to throw roadblocks. We're here to help, but it's got to be within certain parameters.
There's a, there's a couple other things that I failed to mention that I just wanted to bring up, to make you aware of. And the mayor will probably elaborate more on this on a one-on-one, is Davie has a program that they call the Safer Watch. It's an app on your phone where you can actually report a problem in progress, and it goes straight to their dispatch desk. And they dispatch immediately from that. And the only, the only way, it's actually sometimes faster than 911, because that goes through BSO, then goes to Davie. But if they're on another call, you're going to have to wait a few minutes until they can make that. The other thing that's very important is if you guys, if you're on vacation, we have a Vacation Watch. The Davie Police Officer will be at your resident three times a day, and that's three different shifts. It's not the same officer three times, one right after the other. It's one in the morning, one in midday, and one in the middle of the night. They check your doors, your windows. You tell them which cars are there. You tell them what to expect, if there's dogs in the house, if you have a pet sitter, if you have that, if you have this. But they will come back, they will physically be there, and then they will email you, no matter where you are in the world, that they were there. So, you have a record of that. And if there's a problem, if a door got opened by accident, they will email and let you know that immediately. You know, things like that. Mayor was in Italy, I think, and he was getting emails.
It's really awesome, I'll tell you that, because it just gives you that sense of security.
But there's tools out there, you know, that can help you. Having a police officer come, come through your neighborhood, whether it's two or three times, you know, is, is very valuable. It's, because it's all in the perception of what everybody sees. So, just a couple of things I want to pass along, that I didn't, I wasn't able to earlier, that I forgot about.
Great. Thank you, Gary.
Yeah, Bob?
Yeah, I wanted to add something as well. I made a note here, but I, when I finished the one topic, I wrapped up. So, a couple of years ago, there was a neighborhood dispute going on, and, you know, what ended up happening is I had to take the side of the neighbors that were complaining. About two, three weeks later, my pickup truck was vandalized to the tune of about $5,000. Sugar in the gas tank, twice, okay? Didn't stop me from helping the neighbors, but it put a really bad taste in my mouth. So, at the time, I went to, I, you know, Davie was out to investigate the crimes both times. And at that time, I spoke to the, you know, one of the police officers and said, "What can I do? We don't have, we're fenced on three sides, not across the front. I've got a hedgerow across the front." Well, what I, what I ended up doing, that they suggested, is I put up one surveillance camera. I've put up a couple of more since then, because I want the broader view. But I put a sign out front, premises under surveillance. Whether I had cameras or not, they'll see that and keep going. Now, here's the benefit of a couple of the residents, particularly closer to the gate, having surveillance cameras. The PD will come by and they'll see who has cameras. They will figure out what time this crime occurred, based on the reports that have been filed. They can use other people's surveillance cameras to find the crooks that are holding you, holding you guys up at night, in the middle of the day. It doesn't really matter. Those cameras are invaluable. And I was just talking to Detective Ramirez, and it's, I'm putting more up, only because I've got concerns out the back now. But they work. They were, and even just a couple of signs. Don't put Ring Doorbell, because everybody has those. Put, you know, this property is under surveillance, and I've got those front and back. I haven't had a problem since then. Nobody's been on my property, other than the mailman, the FedEx guy, and Amazon. So, that's one additional alternative. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Bob. All right. Where are we? Legal comments. Richard?
Thank you, Mayor. No legal comments tonight.
Great. Thank you. Appreciate it. And Andy, administrative comments?
I have the same.
Okay. All right. Wow. Rocking along. All right, item number eight.
This is an ordinance on first reading. This is an ordinance of the town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, amending the town of Southwest Ranches Unified Land Development Code pertaining to the use of helicopters within the town, providing for conflict, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date.
Motion approved.
Second.
Have a motion to approve and a second. I want to say a couple item, a couple of comments on this. This was a item that I requested to come before the council. As we, as we grow, and as we see some of our properties being transformed, this is not, I want to be clear, this is not really a problem today, but I believe that this is something that we can do very tangibly to help protect our rural lifestyle. And the, the mix of helicopters and animals is not good. They do not go together. And as we get, you know, more larger developments, I think this will be more and more of a problem. And frankly, some of the, just not even the development, but some of the individual properties, the way they're being developed, this could be a problem. And so, rather than waiting till it's a problem and then having to deal with it, I felt it was important to get ahead of the curve and bring this before the council. I do understand that there is at least one property in town that already has a helicopter in it, and so, we've checked with legal on that, and that property would be, would be grandfathered in. It would not be affected by this ordinance. They were already, already using it. That was...
Would that be for the current owner only?
Yeah, that was my understanding from Keith, yes.
Current, the current only? What is that? That, that, they would be grandfathered in?
That they would be grandfathered.
Yes, that was my understanding as well. So, I'm not sure about current owner, but frankly, current owner is fine with me. But, but I'm not, I didn't, I didn't ask that specific question.
If the property turns over, maybe we can revoke that.
Yeah, it's very possible. So, I know there's some concerns about this item, so I, hopefully, we can, we can talk through this. This does take five votes to pass. And, and so, even though, once, so this, this does allow for exceptions that could be passed by supermajority of the, of the council. But to pass the ordinance itself is a 5-0 vote. And so, I'm hoping that we can, we can get on the same page with this one and, and pass it. If it needs to be tweaked a little bit, I'm certainly open to that. But with that, is there any other council comment before I open it up? Jim? I'm sorry.
You need, you need five votes twice, right? There's two readings.
Well, there's two readings.
Right.
Yes, two readings.
Okay.
Yep.
Mayor?
Yes, yes, sir.
If you would. I do have a few comments that I'd like to, to share. I think, as you know, and the other council members know, I attended the Comprehensive Planning Board meeting where this item was discussed. And I'm not totally against any ordinance that sets the parameters for a resident to get a permit to operate a helicopter in the town. But I would like to discuss possible changes to the current proposed ordinance, if that's all right.
Absolutely.
All right. Number one, I know that there was a single incident of a helicopter that brought in a wedding couple to a property on Volunteer Road, and from what I understand, that property is no longer having any events. So, if we look at the ordinance itself on page one...
Jim, can I just, just one brief comment? I just want to be clear that I proposed this before that event happened. This ordinance was, has nothing to do with that particular one-time event.
Right. And I also understand, Mayor, that there is a development out to the west...
Yes, sir.
...that had possibly asked, but their site plan did not include a helicopter pad. For them to come back and change that, I think the council could stop that on their site plan. I mean, that would be just my feeling. They would have to resubmit a plan, and we do not have to approve that site plan. So, that would squash that particular area that you're talking about out there.
I'm not sure that's true.
No?
I won't.
Okay, I was just wondering if it was or wasn't true, right? But in this ordinance here, if we could look at page one, section two, and it's the second sentence that's down that says, "No helicopter may land or take off in the town," that's pretty hard right there. I know it says, aside from emergencies, law enforcement, and emergency again, would there be a way to say that if a resident were to obtain a permit, that that would be okay to land, instead of no helicopter taking off at all? If they were able to obtain a permit, would that take the place of this no helicopter landing or taking off at all?
Well, I think that's the way the ordinance reads. I certainly wouldn't mind changing the wording to do that, but that's already the intention of that. That it's, in other words, it says it's prohibited unless you are an emergency or unless you get the special permit.
Right. Wouldn't see you there as well.
Yeah, right.
So, it's, it's, it's already, it's already in there. It may be worded a little different than what you'd like.
Okay.
If we need to tweak that, that's okay. But the, but the intention is exactly what you're saying.
All right. If you go on down, if you would, to the third line, the sentence that states that the residents within 1,500 foot of a site have been notified of the request, all right? Mayor, the 1,500 foot is a very, very long ways away.
Okay.
And I do, I did some research, and I looked up that the Huey helicopter that the United States Army currently uses at 1,500 foot, there's a decimal reading of 68. And the normal voice is around 60. So, I'm not sure why we would pick 1,500 foot. Could we change that to 500 foot, which is the same as the livestock? You can't have livestock within 500 foot. Could, so that would notify the immediate residents around that particular resident, and you wouldn't have to go out over a quarter of a mile to reach out to people.
I wouldn't fight you on that.
Can I, can I just?
Sure.
Can I fight him on it?
If you want.
So, Jim, when I start thinking about livestock, and I start thinking about the sizes of properties and all that, the front of my property is a little over 400 feet. So, it only takes a few properties on my street to be 1,500 feet away. And we hear helicopters all the time, very loudly, that are flying over 27, up and down Griffin Road, every time there's an accident. So, I like that idea, because, I mean, we got a number of houses with horses on the street. I don't know if they're equally distributed at 1,500 feet, but I would want to know if, I was my neighbor three, three doors down, that we plan on having a helicopter come in, because then they can do something, like on 4th of July. So, to me, that number's a good number. I mean, maybe it should be a little less, but 500 feet, that's my next-door neighbor.
What we have, Bob, not to, not to interrupt, but we have that you can't do it within 500 foot of livestock. Now, you're saying that it's better if you had it at 1,500 foot to notify people, but it's okay within 500 foot of livestock. See, this, this doesn't really...
They conflict, you're saying?
Yes, they conflict with each other. So, that's why I'm saying, why would you have animals, livestock at 500, and have to notify residents at 1,500? I mean, if you made them both... I mean, if you made them both the same, you know, it give the person that was applying for a permit, an opportunity to, you know, instead of having to reach out and to a bunch of homes, right?
It makes sense what you're saying.
Right.
I was thinking 1,500 on the livestock and 500, but you're right, I got it backwards in my memory.
So like I said, that, that was one of the concerns that I did have on the item.
So Jim, before you move off that, what would you recommend then?
Well, if you.
To me, the 500, I, I'd like that to be a little further, to be honest with you, for the livestock.
What if we made both of them 750, Jim?
Okay.
Does that sound right?
I got you.
750?
Yeah, that way you don't have to notify a quarter of a mile away.
Right. It cuts that in half and provides a little bit extra buffer.
And provides a little more protection for the animals.
Right.
All right?
Good.
And then the other issue would be, in item number three on page number one, page one, still on page one, can, can you explain to me what the term there, deuterius, deuterius is? What does that?
Deleterious.
Deleterious, right. It's not deleterious to the community. What does that, and how would that be enforced?
Richard, you would have to respond to that one.
Yeah, well, I'm, I'm doing a couple of things.
That's a legal term.
Sorry. Let me back up a little bit first. I want to clarify one thing there because one thing, when you mentioned the one that was grandfathered in.
Yeah.
That's, the only exception to that is if that use is stopped for, for six months. If they don't use that for six months, it's not, it's no longer grandfathered in.
Okay.
So I wanted to make that clear.
Yes, sir, it currently has an FAA approval. It still currently has an FAA approval.
Correct. But if they, if they cease that use.
Yes.
For more, for six months.
Six months, okay.
Then it's no longer grandfathered in once this, if this is passed.
Good. So they just need to keep that certification up.
Okay.
Right, so that's one thing.
Right.
The second thing is, Mayor, I, there may have been some confusion, maybe I heard it wrong, but this does, this ordinance does not require a 5-0 vote to be passed.
Oh, I was told it was.
No, it's not one of the, it's not quasi judicial, it's not as to one property.
Not a land use.
It's not a land use, so this is just changing the code. This is not require a 5-0 authority.
Okay, all right. Thank you for clarifying that.
Sure.
I had heard it was five.
And I may have stepped on the last item that you wanted me to clarify, so I may.
Oh, so Jim, what was that?
The word D-E-L-E-T-E-R.
Oh geez.
Deleterious?
Yeah.
Thank you, thank you.
I got busted out.
Right.
You're going to have to bring Webster dictionary.
Get your book out, right. And, and if, and whatever that means, how do we determine that and how would we enforce such a thing? I'm not even sure what it is.
Yeah, I mean, the thing is, sorry, oh, thank you, yeah. It is, it's causing harm to the surrounding properties. It's a unique way to state it, but that's, that's the, the sense and that's the spirit of it and why it's in there, so.
What harm, or how would you determine what harm was caused? Now naturally, if a horse ran through a gate and, and broke his neck or something, I understand, but other than that, how would you determine the harm that was done to a property? Unless they sat down in the middle of somebody's yard and just tore it completely up, how would you determine that? I'm not sure.
I mean, sure, I'm sure there's several ways. I mean, if, if the wind or the, any draft coming off the helicopter destroys something, maybe there's articles on the property that are loose or hay flying everywhere or feed. I mean, there can be a number of instances. I, I don't know all of them, but I think that's the spirit and that's the reason that it's in there.
But if, if the neighbors are notified or so, when it, when it comes in, the person that's requesting it knows that the helicopter's coming in. So really, their property's not the one that will get, that relates to this. It's the other properties around. But a helicopter coming in and landing doesn't destroy properties three, four hundred foot away, that just doesn't happen, you know? So I was just curious as to how would we determine what, how would we police?
I, the way I, I'm not the attorney, but the way I would interpret that for myself is very similar to like the noise ordinance, okay? It's not that you're destroying the properties next door to them, you know? But you're taking away the peace and tranquility of being able to peacefully enjoy your property. Now, there may be more, even more serious things where livestock, you know, harms or kills, is, is killed through it, that certainly is a possibility, but that isn't where I would draw the line. I would draw the line that, you know, if they're, if they're certainly without this, it's the distinct possibility that certain properties could have helicopters become a part of the normal daily life. Taking a helicopter off to work every day downtown Miami, you know? It's, 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 20 years ago, we'd say that's crazy. Today, I don't think it's crazy at all. I think it's a very, very distinct possibility. And so to destroy someone else's peace and quiet of their property, having to hear that thing churn up every morning and head out and then come back and churn down at night is, is destroys their peaceful enjoyment of their property. And that is, that's harmful, even though it's not destroying their property or killing their animals or doing anything that, you know, you would be able to point out to, but it's very similar to a noise issue.
I got a definition for you, Jim, also, for deleterious, if you want it.
Why, why don't we just change the word to detrimental?
Well, here's what deleterious means. Harmful, often in a subtle or unexpected way. Written by a lawyer, of course.
I think it's a good word. I think it's a good word.
It's a right word.
Yeah, I think it's the right word.
Because the point is.
We're just not familiar with it.
Right, right. What can happen? We don't know yet.
Yeah.
And like I said, back to the livestock, what if the owner of the property has livestock? I know that was mentioned at the comp board. What if the owner himself has livestock? Are we exempting him from landing there if he were to pull a permit and it's his own livestock? Because that wasn't included in this and I know that was discussed.
Yeah, yeah, I think that's a good point. That is a good point. I think if somebody is pulling the permit themselves, then they are taking that risk on for their own, their own livestock. So it probably should be specifically excluded there.
In the permit as well.
Yeah, 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 I think that's a good addition.
Yeah. Yeah, Andy, when you create the permit, you may want to have language in there that they would be signing off on.
Did you catch that?
The fact that they're.
Livestock issue on the property.
Releasing anybody liable to their own animals. It's probably not the best language, but.
And then one of the last ones here, Mayor, is that you're asking someone for a 90-day request. We'll take the incident where the wedding couple was brought in. I don't know if someone would know three months ahead of time that they'd want a helicopter to take them to their wedding. 30, 30 days is very sufficient to notify the residents in the area at 750 foot? Even at 1,500 foot, it would have been enough to notify the residents? Would it be possible to shorten that 90 days so that the resident would have a, a reasonable idea that he would be able to get a permit?
Yeah.
If I may.
So let me, go ahead.
On the 30 days, the problem with the 30 days is when they make the application here, they're going to have to do mailing.
Yeah.
And that's where the problem is.
So, I mean, there's, there's, there's multiple things, right? So they make the application, which is going to take some time, right? Then we have to do the mailing and then we have to really give time for the resident. I mean, what good does it do if they get it, you know, four or five days before the event? It's not going to, it's not going to cut it. So I think the minimum, 90 days, maybe a little high, but I think minimum 60 days is really required.
You really think that it would take two full months to do that, to get the message out and to have people hear?
You know, you know how difficult it is to get the message out to residents. And, you know, some, some of them will get it and they'll toss it, others, one neighbor will see it, they'll talk to their other neighbor, you know, two or three weeks later, hey, did you get this? Yeah, it, it takes a while. It takes a while. 30 days is, you know.
30 days may be short, 90 days may be long.
Right.
What about 45 in the middle? To, I mean, I want the people to have a realize.
Between 60 and 90, 30 and 90 was 60, but that's a pretty good negotiation point, Jim. You get one, you get one for negotiation, but I am a finance guy, so I know the difference between 30 and 90.
But I, I would like the residents to feel if it were that they could get the permit and they met the requirements, that it wouldn't take forever for them to, to do it. You know, there's a reasonable light at the end of the tunnel, in other words.
Yeah, I'm okay for, for shortening, but I can't see going under 60 days, Jim. I really can't. I just don't think it's enough time.
Can't see what now?
Going under 60 days for the notification period.
45 days wouldn't work?
You come in, you know, it takes time to get the mailing out.
You have to vote.
You know, this isn't usually go out first-class mail, it goes out the bulk mail and so it takes longer to get out there. And then some people toss it, some people don't, and then you've got to give them time to contact.
We have to vote too.
Us, the council, right?
Has to be a notice at the meeting.
If they don't contact us, they haven't done anything. So you got to give them several weeks to do that. So, you know, I, I just don't think 45 days is, I think 45 days is really too short.
So you would bring it down to 60?
I'd bring it down to 60 though.
And I do agree that the FAA specific standards need to be met for a chopper to come in. You know, there's certain standards that there's, that's required and I do feel that those are, those are important, that they need to, to live up to that. So I do thank you Mayor, and whatever those changes were, you know, I would agree to that, you know, we can, we can work on that and.
Russell, Deborah, do we have those changes recorded?
We will, we certainly have it in the minutes. I would like to have a summary because we, we will need to amend the motion to encapsulate all of the changes made tonight. So I'd like to maybe read the movement to the record.
So let's, let's do that, can we do that right now?
Absolutely.
Let's make sure we're all on the same page.
Okay, I just want you to recap and then do the amendment.
So keep us honest here, Jim.
Yeah, I want to make sure that, I want to make sure that we capture all the changes. So the, the first change that, that we captured was that the, the residents within 750 feet of the site, correct? Number two was unchanged.
Whoa, 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 now, so, so there was two parts to that one. One was the residents was 750 feet, the other one was the cattle was going to go from 500 to 750.
That's later on, I didn't get to it.
Okay, okay, sorry.
No, it's okay, just want to make sure. So that, number one was that we changed from 1,500 to 750. Item two was left the same, item three was left the same, and number four was increased from 500 to 750. And number six, the 90 days was reduced down to 60 days.
Right.
So those were the changes.
And then there was also, let me, let me just, sure. And then there was the, the piece where cattle on that.
Oh, yes, I have that as well.
On the request. Yeah, livestock, sorry, livestock on, on the individual, the petitioner, yeah, is exempt.
He's exempt from requiring the permit, right.
So that would be, I mean, would we add that as a number?
That's a number four.
Right.
That's a number four.
So just add it to the number.
Right.
Mayor, I did, yeah, I did want to add one last thing. Can you explain the next last sentence there? A violation of this provision shall be deemed to cause irreparable harm? That, I don't, how is that enforceable? I, I'm not sure. Irreparable harm, it, I looked up the definition and it just doesn't seem to fit here. I don't know what.
I guess what it's saying is if somebody loses that piece, just as an example, somebody loses that peace and quiet, you can't get that back.
Or the helicopter crashes in their house.
Yeah, I was going with the slop approach, but yeah, that, that could be it too.
There's also another thing here that Richard just said this doesn't require a 5-0, but that's not the way it's written. It says here, "The town council, upon a super majority vote, may approve."
That's for the permit, we're talking about tonight's.
Yeah, Bob, I misunderstood that too.
Thank you.
I misunderstood that too, Bob, yeah, I did.
I do have a, a comment, question. And I, I don't know if we want to entertain this or not, but let me give you a little bit of background. Before the age of drones, FPNL would inspect every, once a year, sometimes twice a year, the high power lines.
27 though?
No, the ones going right through our town by helicopter, up close and personal.
You're talking about the ones in your backyard?
Yep.
Only, because I don't, I know what you're talking about.
Yeah, okay. And that, and the helicopter would just be going parallel and it would be picking pictures, I would assume, and it would be going parallel very slowly with the lines right above treetop level. Was mostly in the hover state and just barely moving. The whole house, I'm 600 and some odd feet away, my whole house shook.
Really?
I mean, it was intense. It to the point where you came running out with, you know, like, and there was an aircraft that crashed or something, you know, going on like that. Do we want to put in something about hovering an excessive amount of time or something to that effect?
Not to affect FPNL, just for a thorough search.
In general, I'm just saying that I experienced the, at home, what happens when they hover five, five minutes in, within a general area.
I don't know that we have, I don't know, Richard, what your thoughts is on this, but I, this did come up, not, not this particular thing, but similar to it did come up earlier, whether we even have jurisdiction or if that's an FAA thing, you know?
No, I mean, we, I mean, there's definitely a case out there, I've, I've seen a case.
Where we can say.
We can regulate helicopters.
Yeah, but I mean, as far as, not, not whether they land or something, but where they're flying in town.
Well, we, with Home Rule, we can definitely regulate where they're going and we can regulate, you know, how they're landing, so we can definitely.
Landing, I get, but can, can we say helicopters don't fly below this certain speed and height?
No, sorry.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think that.
That's not what I'm, that's not what I'm saying. What I'm saying is, let's say there's a pasture with a helipad on it and the helicopter goes up and stays up there for five, 10 minutes and they're waiting on a guest to come in and they've come back down and load up the guest or something like that. Meanwhile, all the houses all around there are completely vibrating like no tomorrow. I, I'm just giving you a possible scenario.
Yeah, no, and what I'm saying is that we can, we can regulate where they can land and where they can't land. But if they're in the air, that's FAA. We have no, we, we can't say, "Don't hover."
No, right.
Correct.
It's, it's just varies.
Yeah.
You have to experience.
No, I know it's, I know it's, yeah, no, it's not good.
Richard, yeah, and yeah, sorry. I do have a similar question though to Gary's. So I looked into, I, I'm a drone pilot, so I was looking at that two years ago as a side business and FPNL is not entirely using drones, it just depends. I don't know if we can regulate helicopters that are hired by FPNL. We'd need to check what legislation they've passed already when some other city has given them similar griefs. I, I think we need to look into that. You know, Gary's example is excellent. I, I used to see them on 27 all the time. You got a guy sitting out the side with a piece of metal that grounds the helicopter to the wire. So the 80,000 volts, everybody is connected at that point and they go very slowly and they're inspecting usually the connection points. But FPNL may already have gotten favorable legislation to let them do whatever they want, wherever they want, wherever they've got right of way.
Utilities have certain, right, yeah, that's what I'm saying. I, I don't know the answer to that regarding the helicopters as to, you know, what they can specifically do. One thing I wanted to back up and just clarify was the, was the language regarding that we have in there as to the violation, hold on.
Irreparable?
Correct. And the reason that we put that in there is that, under our code, that triggers the maximum amount of a fine of $5,000. So that's why we would put it under there, it would allow the magistrate to do that maximum penalty. So I just want to clarify.
In a really egregious situation.
Correct, right.
Yeah. Not that he would do that. Not that he would do that every time.
No.
In a really egregious situation.
Gives him the latitude that he has that ability to go up to that high amount.
Right, right.
Yeah.
But, you know, I did look up that word. The other word I didn't, I, I got an idea what it was. But for irreputable harm, you know, the first injury must be both certain and great. It must be actual and not theoretical. All right? Injunctive relief will not be granted against someone merely feared as liable to occur as li, as a liable, as a liable is occurred at some infinite time. All right? So you can't say that it may happen as irreputable harm. Bear allocations of what is likely to occur are of no value since the court must decide whether the harm will in fact occur. So, you know, you don't know that harm will occur. I, I mean, that just seems like a word that's just not, I don't, necessary. I, I don't know. It just seems like it's too hard.
Yeah, you, you're talking about what's happened after versus what's happened before. What this, this is ordinance, we don't know what's gonna happen, right? It hasn't happened yet. So we don't know what's gonna happen. So that word is in there to say that if that were to happen, if irreparable, it could be, what it's saying is it could be irreparable, and if it does, we want the maximum fine for it. Okay? But we're, that's not necessarily gonna be applied in every situation. If, if it's somebody, you know, doesn't get a permit and, and lands a helicopter and takes off and, you know, it's not gonna be irreparable.
Good luck.
Okay? But if they, if they get, ask for a permit and it's, it's denied and they do it anyway and they crash into the house next to them and the house burns down and the people die, that's irreparable. So we've gotta have it in there for those extreme cases where we need to use the maximum fine.
And Jim, part of what you were saying has to do with injunct, injunctive relief, which it doesn't apply to what we're talking about here.
Yeah, that whole section sounds dope anyways.
Why wouldn't it?
This isn't an injunction, this is a code hearing.
Sorry, couldn't resist.
All right, all right.
All right.
Okay.
Great. Thank you, Jim.
Yes, okay.
All right.
Taking the time.
Um, any, I think we're, I think we're good on the council. Any, uh, public comment on this item? You have to get up at the mic if you're gonna do it.
She's probably gonna say like, you gotta be kidding me, right?
Right.
On the, 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 the last thing Jim was talking about.
Irreputable.
Irreputable harm?
That's in the dog ordinance, it's in all the ordinances. That's always the last thing because, as the town attorney said, for, for that purpose. But I was just gonna share that.
Yep, thank you. All right.
So Mr. Mayor, do I need to amend my, my motion?
Correct.
Yeah, so we need to, right, we need to amend the motion?
All right, so I'd like to amend my motion that, um, both amounts, the residents within fifteen hundred feet be amended to seven hundred and fifty feet and, um.
Well, let me, David, can I?
Yeah, go ahead.
Can you read off the changes one last time and then you can just agree with them? That way we'll all hear it.
Perfect.
Sound all right?
All right.
Okay.
Okay, so the changes that I have are on section one or, uh, number one, that residents within seven hundred and fifty feet of the site have been notified of the request. Number two is unchanged, number three is unchanged, number four would be changed to say that there is no livestock maintained within seven hundred and fifty feet and that the property owner would be exempt from being required to have a permit for, uh, due to their own livestock. Uh, within number five, we would change that from ninety days to sixty days. And six would remain the same. Those are the changes that I have.
Perfect.
I, I so move my amended motion accordingly.
Thank you, David.
And I accept it as the second.
Okay, perfect. Okay, if we can please call the roll.
Absolutely. Councilmember Hartman?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Councilmember Kozinski?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Albritton?
Yes.
Mayor Bright Cruz?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Great, thank you.
Sorry, Mayor.
No, no. Hey, Jim, you had some great points. You had some great, we adjusted it. I think it's a better ordinance now than it was when it walked into the room.
Now, you know, I, I heard some comments at the comprehensive planning board. People don't understand helicopters to start with. So, you know.
All right. We are on item number ten.
Item ten is a resolution of the town council of the town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, repealing resolution number two thousand twenty-three dash zero five one adopted on May twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-three, and approving a new interlocal agreement with Broward County to participate as a municipal party in an independent legal entity known as the Solid Waste Disposal and Recyclable Materials Processing Authority of Broward County, Florida. Attached here to is Exhibit A and incorporated herein in authorizing the proper town officials to execute, providing for conflicts, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date.
Thank you. Do I have a motion on this item?
Motion, second.
I have a motion and a second. So this item is, uh, basically a rehash of the ILA agreement that we already went through. Um, as it went through the county, there were some other adjustments that were made to it, so we're now bringing our version into alignment with what, uh, the other communities have passed. The intention and the mechanics of it, um, for the most part are the same. Any council comment on this item?
No, just cleaning it up.
Yep, just to clean up. Seeing none, any public comment on this item?
Well, I would've talked during board reports, but we skipped right.
Yeah, I know, I skipped right by it. Thank you for being patient.
So, and I, I'm sorry, I did not, I, I may have missed it. I didn't, I'm reading through the whole thing, but I wanna make sure that your amendment that you passed on the first one, where you had the commitment from the county?
Yep.
That you would be on the smaller group? I just wanna make sure that that's there.
Yep.
I just wanted to, as everybody, you've all made everyone aware that there is a grassroots effort started and we have, we're resident group, so I actually, I have an email to share, so if anyone wants to get involved, um, well, there is the meeting that will be September thirteenth, will be the next meeting at Town Hall at seven PM. Um, the email address is countryestatecivic@gmail.com. So it's C O U N T R Y E S T A T E S C I V I C A S S O C at gmail.com. Didn't think about all that before. But I just also had a few things. I know, as, as you mentioned, that incinerators, they are very outdated and they're also one of the more expensive methods of solid waste disposal. And one of the things in this ILA, I believe it's in the ILA, where it states in there that no member municipality that's part of that authority can own their own disposal or whatever. So it seems like the county is trying to keep that for themselves and as a way to, where they can take all the money regardless of the effects to the residents and everybody else.